Okay, at this time I'll call the October 2nd, 2014 regular meeting for the Dixon County Commissioners to order. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is approval of the agenda, and we do have two items that we're going to add to the agenda. First one is, under other business, review and also vote on a resolution for the annual fee for Sewer District Number Two. And then the second item we'll be adding is to sign the contract for approval with Clark Lumber on the Navarre Canstep project. And I'll move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next time we have is the consent agenda and the minutes of September 25th work session in our regular meeting are in that included. And then also we have abatements of $5,303.44. We have wire payments of $10,832.77.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go ahead and go to our Commissioner comments, and Craig, we'll start with you.
Yeah, last Thursday after our meeting, I went to Lloyd and attended the North Central Kansas Regional Planting Commission meeting. Leon Atwell, he's working with the board doing a comprehensive development strategy. It's ongoing, but we've been ordering now for over a year. Went through the course financials and stuff, and we're wrapping budgeting and then Pat from Poppy Ashman, she called in, you know, doing preliminary of our budget. We did have some, we did some pictures of hail damage that was on the building there. I found it really fascinating, I shouldn't say fascinating, interesting as stuff. The roof there is 119 foot long, and two weeks before that they brought the wrong materials to re-roof it, so they didn't have it. But it's in a roll, and it's steel, and they bring it there in a roll, and they cut it and bend it, so it's all one length, 119 foot long. That's what, you know, it's four foot at the front, runs back, and so, but I thought that was, but we, if you want to say there was a blessing that we didn't put the new roof on before, because that way we only had to come up with about half the money for the new roof. Next meeting is going to be November 6th at Claude County in Concordia, it's going to ring a banquet. So that's all, all I have.
Okay, thank you, Liverin. Well, I guess I could report that we have had a lot of rain in the county, at least out south of Abilene here this last week. It is going to delay a lot of the fall planting of wheat and harvesting that's, that was probably planned for this time of the year, but hopefully we can get some drier weather to get those things accomplished. I also mentioned here that after our meeting today, we are, three Commissioners, Brad and John, I guess our county engineer, John Goff, are planning on going on a, we do this every year, we call it our road tour, and what we do is, is drive throughout the county, and we're looking at conditions of the roads and bridges and, and kind of get a feel for, even though we have a lot of this already documented, as far as conditions of these things, it's just, once you actually go and physically look at it, it kind of keeps us in touch with, with what needs to be done and why we're doing these things. So also, like I say, we are, we're trying to publicize too, the need for the sales tax that we are promoting, to try to get funds to help support to the cost of the road and bridge projects that we have coming up. So it's just a good idea to go out there and look ourselves, and always look forward to doing that.
I'll go ahead and just kind of add a little bit to that on the sales tax issue. One of the things that we do have in our plans is to have some visits with the superintendents of the school districts. There's five in the group, and some of the conversation that we'd like to have with them is visiting with them on, I know the bus routes, you know, we've talked about over at Chapman, 675 miles, was that it? 650 miles or so per day that they go with their, their two round trips. You know, similar amounts for the Abilene School District, and, and then also, you know, when you consider the other school districts that we have in the county of Harrington and Hope Solomon.
We actually just got word last night late, we heard from all five districts, and their averages are about 3,500 miles a day with the five school districts.
And so, you know, that's an important impact as far as the condition of the roads and the safety factor and the bridges and so on, but we're, you know, just want to get the information out throughout the county, because this is an important vote that's lined up and going to address some of the budget needs we have with roads and bridges. I also plan to go with, John Goff will be there, the Abilene Rotary Club has their meeting on Friday, and so that program will be to visit with the, with the Rotary Club and tell them about the sales tax, but also information on it, but also answering the questions they have. And I believe that it also is a ceremony coming up that I'll plan to attend, it's still a little ways off, but the deployment taking place over at Fort Riley certainly has an impact on the area, but we certainly have a connection there with Fort Riley, and they're going to have the tastement of the colors also in, in the near future. Okay, I believe that's probably all we have. Any other comments or reports? We'll go ahead and move on to presentation of petitions and proclamations, and before we do the proclamation, we have a couple of men here in the front row, and young men, we didn't tip you off on this in advance, but now you're here as far as the school project, is that correct?
Yes.
And would you want to go ahead and maybe give your names and tell us the purpose of your project, or what you're here to do today?
I'm Dylan Annes, and I'm here to just kind of listen and review what you guys are doing, because we're learning about government and how small government and larger government work.
Any tales?
Basically taking notes on everything you guys are saying.
We need to say some real, something very important, so profound, no.
There's some wisdom here.
Yeah, and, and your name?
My name's JT Shamart, and yeah, we're just trying to understand the issues we are having in our community, and what we try to do to understand and work through the issues we have, and.
Well, I wish you luck. If you can get it in one meeting, you're doing better than we are.
And, and we have had students in the past, we certainly welcome you to be at our meeting, because I think sometimes, once someone attends the meetings and understands a little bit of the process, and we meet weekly, and all three of us are elected officials, as you probably know, and, and each one represents a portion of the county, and, and yet we all look at what's important for the entire county. And so, this, a little bit of a business meeting, but also we'll cover a few issues later on in the meeting that maybe will add to your experience. So thank you for being here, and we appreciate you coming here today.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a proclamation, and this is in regards to National 4-H Week.
Yes, National 4-H Week. So here's a copy of the proclamation. And National 4-H Week is the first, first full week in October every year, and it's just a time for us to celebrate the kids that are involved in 4-H currently and to try to get others interested and involved. So, and what the proclamation is, would be declaring next week, the 5th through the 11th, as Dickinson County 4-H Week, and to encourage citizens to learn more about the program and be involved. We do have some 4-Hers that are here with us, so we'll let them introduce themselves. You guys want to come, come on up?
Yes, and if you'd want to come up, because we'll have a picture.
Yes.
And if you'd want to come up and line up behind us, and then once you're up here, we'll have you introduce yourselves, and if there's a little, something about a particular project or something you're working on, we'd like to hear it.
Do you guys want to start off by introducing yourselves?
Well, I'm Rebecca Prince, and I'm involved in horse project, dedding, crocheting, and dairy cow I started this year.
I'm Abby Prince, and I'm involved in crochet, baking, and crochet, and sewing, and goats, dairy goats.
My name's Jessie, and I'm in chickens crafts and horticulture.
My name's Dawn Prince, and I'm in horticulture and crafts.
And they're all members of the Detroit Rambler's, wear their club t-shirts to come visit this morning.
That's obvious.
Very good, so we do have.
I was going to say, how long have you been now in 4-H individually?
Yeah.
I know, well, I know it would vary.
Well, yeah, I was in eight years, but we are a military family, so we move around. We were originally, well, we started 4-H when we were in Kansas, but we were over with fragrant hilltoppers, but they have disbanded. And then we went to Pennsylvania and joined another club when we were in Texas at Fort Hood, and we were in the Bell County Club, and then when we came back here, we joined the Detroit Rambler's. We've been in the Detroit Rambler's five years now.
Great. And did the fair?
Everybody else, how many years?
Fair go pretty well? Oh, go ahead and on the others.
Five or six.
Five or six. Yep, and I think everybody else joined when they were seven.
And you participated in the fair this year?
Yes.
So did that, was a pretty good experience?
Yes, they've been working hard at increasing our dairy program.
I was just going to ask.
Yes, we do now have a very large dairy program.
I noticed that.
Last year, it was only my brother's Holstein, so I'm like, well, I'm going to compete with him.
Okay.
I took care of one of our neighbor's jerseys, and I showed her at fair, which I was surprised because she was not very good with halter and everything, but she behaved perfectly at fair. And she got champion in her breed and reserve and overall, so she did really well.
Yeah, so we went from one last year to, was it five?
Yes, we have five this year.
Five dairy this year, so.
If you go back in the registry, they used to have the dairy cows, used to take over like that whole area, and we're trying to revive interest in it, because like, nobody has dairy cows.
Well, good luck there. There was, I remember the days when, when our kids were showing dairy, and, and that barn was half full, three-fourths full at that time.
Lot of competition.
And, and I still furnish a word for the dairy, so Keith go one.
He's supporting you all the way. We do have two, two things that are happening during National 4-H Week. Our 4-H Leadership Squad, which is our junior leader and ambassador group, are sponsoring a coloring contest for all elementary students in the county, so they've distributed sheets and they're, they're encouraged, all the kids are encouraged to participate in that. And then we're also doing a special event next weekend called 48 Hours of 4-H, and the kids have made it a goal to fight hunger in Dickinson County. So they're going to be collecting food, and there will be, next weekend they're actually collecting at the grocery stores throughout the county, they'll be there with a list of what the food pantries really need to have, and encouraging people as they go in, you know, just to pick up a couple items for the food pantry, and then they'll take care of getting those delivered. And they're also keeping track as a club of how many items they donate, or have donated by others, so people who donate will, can contribute their donation towards a particular club, because the generosity of each club will help to determine what order they eat in at the Achievement Banquet.
Well, that's a good idea.
So those who help to provide the most for people that are hungry in the county will be the first ones to eat that night, so. So, and that's a, a project that's been coordinated by our leadership squad.
Excellent. Would you want to come up behind here, and we'll have a picture, and?
And Chelsea Meyer, our family and consumer science agent, is here with us also, so she is, agreed to be our photographer for the day.
And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation at this time. This is National 4-H Week 2014. The Board of Commissioners of Dixon County proclaim, whereas October 5th through October 11th, 2014 is National 4-H Week, in recognition of the largest out-of-school education program for youth. And whereas 4-H is observed nationally by over 6.5 million 4-H youth, and whereas there are over 320 4-Hers in 12 community clubs active in 4-H Dickinson County, and whereas there are over 150 adult volunteer leaders in the country, in the county, excuse me, that make a difference. It wasn't a typo, I just read it wrong. Whereas 4-H builds on experience of giving equal training to head, heart, hands, and health. Whereas 4-H, as part of K-State Research and Extension, is a program where youth lead, where youth learn together through projects, events, and activities. And whereas 4-H has been helping youth and adults learn, grow, and work together for more than 100 years, urge the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program, which gives youth the chance to learn together and individually as a part of Dickinson County 4-H Youth Development Program. Now therefore, we as the Commissioners of Dixon County do hereby proclaim, October 5th through October 11th, 2014, as Dickinson County 4-H Week, throughout the county, and urge all citizens to attend, observe, and support the work of the 4-H Clubs, done this second day of October 2014. I'll let you receive this and pass it down, and thank you all for being here.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. You've got a lot of tools you're carrying there, so.
You must be a hard worker. You're well equipped there.
Thank you, thank you, Jill.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Should we get, like, everyone looking at the camera photo?
Let's get one more.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Do you want to hold the message?
Do my, do my job. All right, everyone smile. One more. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Reach all the way around here.
And you know, it is impressive, all the work that 4-H does. And you know, the numbers are, I mean, how do we compare with other counties? I mean, I kind of know the answer, but I think it's worth mentioning for the benefit of the press and those here.
Yeah, very well, and as far as retaining members, and especially retaining older members, is one, one thing that our county is known for in, in 4-H circles.
And I think that is, you know, even comparing with the other rural areas of Kansas that are, where agriculture is a huge part of it and the rural life, I mean, I guess, I mean, not to brag, but just pointed out, and I think it contributes to the work that you and others do and all the volunteers. We have, what, double the amount of some counties close by, and?
Yes.
And?
Yes, as far as numbers of members, yeah.
But, but you know, it's nice, because sometimes when you visit with those others, they say, you know, wow, you guys are doing something right, how do you do it? And, you know, I, it's not just by chance, and so I applaud the work you do, and.
Thank you, it's very much our volunteers, a lot of, a lot of their work is in.
And, and you know, the parents and all the children involved, and, and you know, when there's a program, as you've mentioned, the number of years that you've been involved with 4-H, the, the retention and, and having people stay active and work, it's, it's really important to do. I, I know when we have the, the fair week is kind of the showcase of a lot of that, that all of us get to see, but it's certainly an exciting week and a great time in Dickinson County to have all, everybody, you know, participate, so.
Yes, our three sons, you know, I contributed, the 4-H and FFA probably taught them more leadership skills than, than anything that they were involved in, and, and like I say, I, you just, until you've involved in it, you don't realize the leadership skills that the children get by going through a 4-H program.
Some of them end up county commissioners even though.
Well, yeah, I've heard of some times.
It's a great leadership training program.
I didn't go through FFA.
Very good, well, thank you for your support.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you. The back row can be dismissed. Okay, I think at this time, we'll go ahead and have a report from Brad, and Brad is our county administrator, and so he kind of gives a summation of some of the things that are going on, and some of the things on the agenda that we're going to consider later, he's going to cover those in his report right now.
Okay, you, I'd sent you for review the K-Camp Rate Stabilization Agreement. Basically, K-Camp being our liability insurance provider, and so we need that agreement for 2015 through 2017. If we commit to them, for that period of time, they'll give us a 2% premium reduction by way of a stipend, which equates to $8,680. About that consideration on the agenda. Provided you the press release to review, and it looks like the only one I'm waiting on now is to see the Solvent for their, their OK on that, and we'll make a release on that regarding the Kent District. And the issues we had there, we worked out. We talked earlier in the work session about the handouts and the flyers, and done some banners out during the month of October, and we'll work on that, it sounds like that's favorable regarding the sales tax. And I think I gave you an updated presentations calendar, like Lynn mentioned, he and John will be going to Rotary tomorrow, Craig and I are going to Solvent and the Senior Center tomorrow, and then next week we get to our few gigs, if you will, and we're going to get different places in the county, so. And then you also have year-to-date staffing reports. We've had a couple changes, I think you're already aware of it, but one EMS, couple in Health Department, so that'll be two alarming there, so. Other than that, that's about all we've got. We do have the contract for materials for Clark Lumber, you've already approved and accepted the bid on that, but we just got the final contract that we need to get signed so that keep it making work in a little bit.
The employment deals, that, I mean, that's pretty much normal, is it, Brad? You know, I mean, you know, looking at the graph, I mean, you know, over the last five years, I mean, it's not, there's nothing normal, I should say abnormal about.
No, it's not, it's.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's not, you know, you got 130 employees, that's.
Two or three.
Yeah.
You know, the graph makes it look more deceptive, you're only looking at 1.5%. In a perfect world, we'd have none, but we obviously don't live in that, and, and one of those, one of those people that have left employment with us is a jader, and that's, if you don't know, that's very common, so. And then we had one that left from EMS, so. We have filled both EMS positions that we had vacant, and the one at the Health Department is our, our childcare licensing inspector, we were able to hire. I actually had a meeting this evening at the church up at, by the Sealy Mansion with the chunker providers in the county, who've asked me to come talk to them, and, so, but anyhow, we've got that position filled, and yesterday was Renee Reed's last day, and maybe I'll start it Monday, so we got a little bit of time together this week, but we'll get her training with KDHE, or the regulatory authority on that, so. But yeah, to answer your question, it's not adding, not adding a lot unfortunately at all, so, actually, it's quite a good word, we've had, we've had a couple spikes over the past few years, where we've had a few more at times, I don't know what to attribute that to, but it just happens, so. Seems like everyone that we have that needs leave, or the reason is, has got a different, you know, spouse, many times, I, you know, I'm glad to say many times, just because a spouse has changed employment, and they've got to leave, or they've had a change in, in something within their life that forces them to leave, they don't necessarily want to leave, so, but that happens. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. This time we'll move on to notices and communications, and I'll just go over a couple of things we received in the mail. This is from the National Association of Counties, and it's our county membership dues for next year, and so that's a group that we belong to, and they sent out a publication, but also it's, they refer to themselves as the voice for America's counties, and they identify issues on a national level that would impact counties, and it's just part of a network that's helpful for county commissioners to know what's going on at other counties, and sometimes we have some ideas that we can borrow, but we also become aware of some of the current issues. And some things that happen in other counties or other states, you know, eventually may impact us in some way, one way or the other, so I'll go ahead and pass this on, and we can. Take care of that as far as the national dues. We have envelope here to the county commissioners, and it's identified on the outside as religious information, and sometimes people just send us information, and this is someone on the church, and just kind of talking about some national and international issues. We have the group we just spoke of, the National Association of Counties, and this is their newspaper that they send out, and one of the things that I thought was kind of interesting in the paper that we just received, on the inside, it just mentions why counties should prioritize pipeline safety, and it has a map of where some of the pipelines are, and while most of them are in Texas, there's many of these pipelines that are coming through Kansas. And in today's mail also, just tying in from this, we have from Phillips 66 Pipeline, and they're talking about the, the pipelines that, how they have, you know, various safety management things that they do, and it talks about the terminal, and of course, one of the terminals does go through Kansas, and, and so anyway, it's taking care of the pipelines and maintaining it, and this, here we have this other article that I just referenced to, and it's talking about the hazardous liquid and gas transmission pipelines, and so it's the importance of, you know, proper maintenance, and of course, our energy is very important too, so those are almost companion pieces, even though they just both randomly happened to show up. And I think that's all we have on that. Are there any other information or letters or emails that either, either you or Craig have received?
There wasn't anything on the computer?
No.
And occasionally, you know, we do, we get phone calls, or we have people stop us when they see us somewhere, and, and give us some input or ideas or questions regarding county government and things within the county. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to our business, our first to consider here is review and consider the K-Camp Credits and Rate Stabilization Agreement. So you have that here?
Now I do.
Now I do.
I have one question on that, as I, as I read through that, in order to qualify, you have to have a certain.
Loss ratio.
Yeah, loss ratio below a certain level. We've always been able to maintain that.
Yeah, and that's a real, that's a good plug for us, I mean, we've, I think it's 65% loss ratio with a chance to maintain.
So if you don't qualify for that, then you don't get.
Then you don't qualify for that program, that's correct, it's a good plug. Our last loss ratio for the last two times, I believe, which would be six years, has been below that. And they don't count lightning and hail and acts of nature towards your loss ratio.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yeah, if we'd count that.
Because you have an accident, that goes.
Yeah, of course, yeah. So, and we have, as we're well-known, we've had to replace a number of roofs and vehicle, a substantial amount of vehicle damage and stuff due to hail the last couple of years, so.
Things out of our control, they don't count, yes.
And I'll go ahead and just mention this, reading from the letter that they sent us, the first part just says, "Congratulations, because your county's excellent claims, experience, and long-term involvement in the Kansas County Association multiline Pool, known as K-Camp, your county is eligible to receive," and it's, the amount is $8,680 K-Camp contribution credit that will be subtracted from our 2015 annual property and liability coverage contribution. So, so that is, you know, as you've mentioned, we've, we've, the, the claims have been at a minimum, and, and, you know, once again, that's something we do make an intentional effort towards safety and, and try to, you know, manage those, and so this, this is fortunate that we're, that we, you know, are getting a, a little bit of a credit back. Okay, is there a motion to go ahead and enter into this agreement?
Some move.
I'll sign it.
We have the motion and the second to enter into this agreement with K-Camp. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I guess I'm the only one that needs to sign this, so. We lost our high school group, so.
I noticed that.
You guys mentioned, what was it?
We shouldn't have signed this letter.
Get back to class, huh?
Sign it, yeah, they probably did, and they did stay for a portion of it, and I'm glad we, you know, I'm glad we had some things for discussion in about 4-H that they were able to observe, so.
Maybe they had to get back to class.
Okay.
Yeah.
You remember your high school days, is that what you're saying?
I saw one of Washington Park, so I think that was a case.
I wanted to make that comment before, not this, these, but before them, that they only got so much time.
And it's probably got close to last time, so it takes a little while.
I could have game of slip.
Yeah. Okay, the next item we have is to review and also consider a resolution for an annual fee for sewer district number two, it's Resolution 100214, and Brad, will you give a quick summation?
Yes, this comes to you as a result of a review that Janelle had done earlier this year on the finance of sewer district number two. It's been in existence since 2000, and we had to do a little recalcitrating, and what we discovered, there was a little miscalculation at the onset of the sewer district by personnel that figured that bond council. And long story short, they're going to be just slightly shorter funds to finish up the program. We met, Janelle and I met with a couple of board members for the sewer district, and came up with a very easy resolution, and they're going to. They had a meeting last week of their board, and they determined the best solution was to increase their maintenance, annual maintenance fee from $6 to $15, which is enough to take care of the issue, and.
And that's an annual fee?
That's an annual fee, so, for the maintenance portion, so they, that's their recommendation. The way they work is it goes on the property taxes for the parcels in that district, so we still have enough time that Barbara and her crew can get that change made for the 2015 assessment, which would be the 14 taxes, so. So that's a recommendation from them, based on what we were able to provide them, so to make that correction.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commission on that? Otherwise, we need a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Some move.
I'll sign it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second to adopt Resolution 100214, and for the sewer district number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item we have before us that was also added to the agenda is to sign the contract with Clark Lumber, and this is on the Navar Canstep Project, and so that's been reviewed and, and meets the satisfaction of, for the project. And so is there a motion for acceptance? Or questions?
Yeah, I move that we accept the contract for materials from Clark Lumber, Clark Lumber for the Navar Canstep Project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
We have the motion and the second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries for adjournment.